Good evening, everybody. Happy holidays to you, Merry Christmas, and everything else in between. Appreciate you all coming out tonight, so close to the end of the month. And tonight, we're going to have an invocation presented by Ron Jacobson. Been awhile since he's been here, and we welcome you back. His official title is Grandpa. And he's with us tonight from the Church of the Latter-day Saints, Jesus Christ of the Latter-day Saints, and that's the Santee Ward. And let's see, how long has he been with the church? Hmm, says here eighty-three years. You don't even look old enough to be that there that long.[55.12][55.12](laughter) And what does he do for them? Well, he helps them with their temple and family history, which is very important. And he got all of his training and experience from OJT. And for those of you who are younger in the house, that means on-the-job training, which is one of the best ways of getting experience. And he is retired from federal civil service. He worked for thirty-seven years. He served in the United States Air Force. Thank you for your service. And that was from nineteen fifty-nine to nineteen sixty-three. Holy mackerel, I'm actually, that's almost as long as I've been alive. So I really appreciate you being here for that. And then tonight, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by, let's see, who can I pick from the audience?
Christine Costa.
Who?
Christine Costa.
Christine Costa.[118.92][118.92](laughter) Not my idea. So what we'll do is, we'll rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We humbly bow our head before thee and thank thee, Father, for this opportunity to be able to see the workings of our city and pray that thou will bless those individuals in office, that they will have thy Spirit to guide and direct them and to help them in all that they say and do. We ask thee, Father, to bless those that will be speaking tonight, that they will be speaking from their heart, and that peoples that need to hear the questions they have and the struggles that they have, that some means can be applied to help them. We're grateful, Father, for this country in which we live, and the blessing it is and ours and the freedoms we enjoy. And as we celebrate the birth of thy Son with all of Christiandom, we are grateful unto thee for him and his sacrifice for us. We ask thee, Father, to continue to bless our first responders, whether they're military or firefighters or police officers, and especially our EMTs as they scour the city of Santee and help us that need help at any hour of the day. We are grateful again for this country. We're grateful, Father, for thy Son and pray for peace on earth. We ask thee to bless this city, that we will do more due east. Again, we are grateful for this wonderful city in which we reside and pray that thy choices blessings will be granted unto us. We offer this prayer humbly in the sacred name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So let's show the, let the record show that we are in session. All council members are present and accounted for. Tonight, we're gonna just have a little bit of fun before we get going too far into the weeds. And that's gonna be with a presentation of the Santee City Cup. And for that presentation, I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor to make that presentation. And I'll let him tell you who's getting the cup tonight.
All right, gentlemen, you wanna come on over here?
Coach.
So this is a rivalry, rivalry that's been going on for a lot of years in the city of Santee. It's, it's a really cool thing when you have two high schools in your community and they could have this crosstown rivalry. I am the Santana rep. Councilmember Trotter is the West Hills rep. And it has a lot more West Hills tags on it than it does Santana. And yet again, West Hills did it again. Gentlemen, you guys did a great job out there. It was a hell of a game, went back and forth, but you came up victorious. It's, I know it's, it's like one of those big, big things when you beat the crosstown rival, more important than any other game of the season. It's like Ohio and Michigan almost, right? Yeah. Yep, absolutely. So I hope you had a great time. I hope it's a great memory for you all that you keep and treasure forever. And I'm actually gonna let Councilmember Trotter again hand us over to the coach, as he did before at the game.
As Rob said, you know, every year we go to the game and we have a pleasure and honor to watch these kids play. This last game was tight, you guys. I don't know if you got a chance to watch it, but it was a, just a tight game, real low-scoring, right to the end, and they kicked a field goal at the end of the game to win that thing. And it was super cool. So I'm gonna give this over to the coach. Take it back to the school where it belongs. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely, yeah. Just want to extend our thanks to Mayor Minto and the city of Santee for allowing us to play for this trophy. You know, it's always, everybody's playing for the championships and all those things, and we get this little bonus trophy as well to play for. And it's, you know, just a great, great rivalry. This year, first time ever that we've gone to overtime in the rivalry, so that, that was a big deal. And like these guys said, a very exciting game. These guys get fired up for it all week, and what you guys see on the field after the game is the release of all that energy. So we're very proud to be taken at home once again. I think this is twenty-two for us, and we're gonna try to keep the good times rolling. Thank you, guys, once again.
Congratulations.[470.47][470.47](applause)
Can I get you guys for a picture? Can I get one of our parents to make sure we get one?
So is the kicker here?
The kicker is not here. He's a soccer player, no surprise.[489.02][489.02](laughter)
So the hero's not here tonight, okay.
These guys are all heroes. We got the O-line, and they're the real heroes.
There you go. Is there a way to get this?
Get everybody in there?
Actually, guys. Jumps are sideways? Just put sideways, boy. There you go. There you go. Yep, I'll get that. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
I'd say, I'd say you and Dustin get in the middle, but you gotta be lost.[516.79][516.79](laughter)
Definitely Steve C. over still. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Congratulations, gentlemen. Team, welcome.[524.82][524.82](applause)
Congratulations.
You'll see us out there, having fun again.
Yeah, the fun part about this, every year is see which one of these council members is gonna eat crow.
It's usually me.
I was gonna say, how, are you getting used to it yet?
Yeah.
Put Franks on it.
Franks, everything's great with Franks.[552.82][552.82](laughter) All right, then, we're gonna, we're going to do a little proclamation here, say goodbye to one of our, one of our employees, so. Minji, where are you? Oh, there you are. Come on down here.
No, Minji, no.
It is on. Okay. Making adjustments here. Sorry, folks. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Been around this long, Minji, you can wait another minute. So this is, this is always kind of a fun thing, being the mayor, but it's also a sad thing because we have to say goodbye to an employee, and that's not the fun part about this. So here's what I'm gonna read. Whereas Minji May began his engineering career in the United States in nineteen ninety-two with the Department of Transportation in New York, made better decisions by coming out here to San Diego. Doesn't say that, I just put the, did it in. And whereas Minji moved to San Diego and continued his career with the city of San Diego in nineteen ninety-seven as an associate traffic engineer, and he made an even bigger decision and a better decision by coming to the city of Santee in two thousand and six as Santee's principal traffic engineer. Over his career with Santee, Minji has been instrumental in improving safety of Santee streets with the reduction of collisions by fifty-nine percent. This was accomplished by the award of eleven highway safety improvement program grants, numerous safety improvement recommendations, completion of the active transportation plan, completion of the Sante's mobility element of the general plan, and Minji's overall commitment to improve the safety of the city. And whereas Minji has earned numerous compliments, helped with countless resident requests, demonstrated a positive attitude, and has been a leader in the transportation community and in Santee, championing safety throughout his career. And whereas Minji officially retired from the city on December fourth, thank you for coming back tonight, twenty twenty-five, after thirty-three years as an engineer, nineteen of those public servants with the city of Santee. Now, therefore, I, John Minto, mayor of the city of Santee, on behalf of the city of, city council, do hereby proclaim that Minji May receive due recognition and commendation for the nineteen years of outstanding service and dedication to the performance of his duties at the city of Santee, and much appreciation for his exemplary career in public service, wishing him the very best in retirement. And we do have a gift for you. Congratulations.
Sir?
I'm gonna present this.[752.87][752.87](applause) This is probably the most important thing. And I'll give that to you, and then what we'll do is we'll take this and then we'll get some photographs of that, real quick. And, can you give the microphone, please? Sorry, forgot to pull that over.
We're gonna give it.
Can you say something? It's on.
And this is a great honor, and also want to thank the city council, my colleagues, for all the years of support and trust in me, and also giving me the opportunity and the freedom to do my job. I think, for me, as an immigrant, you guys already embody the American value. Yeah. You guys are already, for me, embodies the American value, independence, equality, reward for hard work. And I, I think that's the greatest, greatest value in the world, and I think that's what makes this country great. And I, as an immigrant, I really benefit myself directly from that. And I am eternally grateful to you and also to this great country. At the end, I want to wish all of you a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and the best for Santee in the future. Thank you so much.[855.52][855.52](applause)
You're very welcome. Now go and do something that you haven't done in a long time, and enjoy yourself.
Thank you, Minji.
Minji, thank you so much for so many years of incredible service to the city of Santee. You're one of the, yes, you're one of the absolute leaders of our community and the city, and you're dearly, dearly gonna be missed. Sincerely, I hope you come back and say hi every now and again, but I understand if you're just like, nope, I'm out.[888.02][888.02](laughter) We love you, buddy. We really do. You're, you've just been phenomenal for us, and we, we couldn't have done it without you. Thank you.
Anybody else want to say?
Well, I appreciate all your service. It's nineteen years in Santee, so I really appreciate it. Congratulations.
Okay, that takes us to consent and the rest of the calendar. Are there any items to be added, deleted, or reordered? Ron? No. Laura?
None for me.
No, Mr. Mayor? Vice Mayor?
None for me, sir.
City Manager? City Attorney?
Nothing, Mayor.
Well, I'm prepared to pull everything off the consent calendar and then go through that, and, and I'm ready. Got my coffee pot. Just kidding. Speakers' names? Just kidding.
We do have speaker slips. Only one on item two.
Oh, item two, that's all? Okay. Call that, call that, please?
That would be truth?
Not item one, huh, Truth?
That'd be truth clause?
There's an impersonator on that seat right there. I didn't feel like pulling a lot of stuff. I didn't need to read a bunch. It was, it was mostly good stuff, even though I would have liked to see a drink all that coffee. Okay, so we have highlights on the spending. I feel weird. I feel like it's too much to the side. There we go. Meeting supplies, the total, we got four hundred and thirty dollars and zero, four cents, there we go. Because there's a lack of transparency on who gets all the meeting supplies, I am left to assume that it must be Ron. I mean, it just makes sense to me. A forty-four dollar phone case and screen protector, for who? Hundred and sixty-two dollars in business cards, for who? National City and Imperial Beach lists the quantity and say who the business cards are for. So there's no reason that Santee can't start doing that, other than maybe somebody doesn't want to update the software, because I have heard that excuse in Lemon Grove, although they don't have any money, so I also understand. A two-hundred-and-two-dollar bike rack for City Hall for the kid who wore a bike helmet for the entire three hours of a previous meeting. Congratulations to him. I'm wondering if I have to hold up a pronto pass for three hours in order to get a five-hundred-dollar or is it five-thousand-dollar? Can't remember. Public transit stop at City Hall. And I say I can't remember because I legitimately forgot to look it up, but it's either five-hundred or five-thousand-dollar bus stop. I'm not sure where they're at at this point, but either way, it's too expensive.
Well, the way they do it is probably five-thousand.
Yeah, probably so. I, I, believe me, they put new ones in IV.
After all, they have a limited amount of money there, so.
In theory, but somehow it just, they keep getting more. Four hundred and seventy dollars in bus transportation that the school district should be funding. Three thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars in hotels for the Cal City Theater Show, another local theater show. And again, I did appreciate the report backs, but it doesn't sound like a good way to spend tax dollars. I'm allowed to, to say I don't like the sound of something. Two hundred and forty-one dollars in plant supplies for City Hall, and I was gonna ask you, is it fake ferns or real plants? But I don't see any here. I don't even see Christmas decorations, so I don't know if that was the right way to spend the money, because other than this thing over here, I would have put some nice tinsel and lights. I mean, no Christmas spirit in this room, other than Santee Claus, of course. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, then.
Can I mention something real quick?
Sure.
Truth, MTS is redesigning our routes right now, so you might call in and suggest it, because I'm thinking we're losing one.
All right, then.
Motion approved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, please prepare to vote and vote.
That motion carries unanimously.
All right, then. Moving right along. That takes us to non-agenda public comment. Speaker slips?
Yes, Mayor, I do have one speaker for Truth.
It's gonna be a lonely night. On my way here, the first thing I heard and saw was a movie-like hawk sound, two crows fighting a hawk. That is not a joke. Seems like a sign. But I got three words for you guys, light the tree. For the record, Ron and Dustin fell to wear red or green at the tree lighting. Very strange, but I'm gonna say the Upstream's were a very talented band. I also went to Mary Hennessy's Celebration of Life, and I remember Mary's Donuts when it was just a shack on the side of the road, that's how I saw it. Santee's very built up since then, that's why this and future councils need to ensure the city's future infrastructure needs are met. Evacuation routes, like Lemon Grove addressed, fire station conditions, overdue street repairs, neglected crosswalk safety, traffic congestion fixes, a new county library when the county gets its priorities straight, I don't know when that's gonna be, wayfinding signage, and a civic center with a bigger centrally-located city hall. Remember that people visit and move to Santee for the businesses' safety and reliability, not vanity or entertainment projects. But if there's no city gear, there should be. I have no Santee pins on my jacket, let's put it that way. I've had two friends from two different areas in this county notice all of the American flags in Santee. I'd like a veterans' freedom park to match that. But the city should not be stealing people's phone numbers to submit survey spam about new taxes. More taxes are likely still not going to sell, but when city government tries again for firefighting needs, this time, don't sell it on fear-mongering. Sell it on bullet-point facts, leaky roofs, inadequate response times, and future needs. Now, a true story, I kept hidden for a long time. In December twenty twenty-three, I was interviewed by the Union Tribune and even did a photo shoot, it's a two-day event. Because there were several privacy-invasive red-flag questions, I don't believe it was ever real, I believe it was a snooping operation to find out who I was affiliated with, if anyone, and the answer's nobody. I bring it up because one question was about if I ever faced retaliation or discrimination at a meeting. The answer at that time was a very fresh yes. When the reporter pushed for that answer, I knew where she wanted me to say, because she had been monitoring East County meetings. So for the city's knowledge, I happily told her about Sean Ailo in the city of San Diego. And I hope that makes up for any harshness I originally came here with, because I took the high road specifically because I thought it would undeservedly disparage the majority of the council. I'm grateful to have earned the hawk feather I have worn ever since, thanks to John Hossack. It's a badge of honor, just like all the opportunities I have received on this three-and-a-half-year-long journey of constant learning, growing, and change. Overall, you guys have done a great job. Don't have to worry about a thing whether I'm here or not. And I try to think of something nice to say about Santee Claus-John, but I feel like I'm running out of time. I'll just say whenever someone says something good about you, which is everybody, I always say, ah, not another one. Thanks.
Well, if you're gonna talk about me, I'll let you have more time.[1356.82][1356.82](laughter) Oh, it's gotta be good, though. Thank you. Any other speaker slips?
No, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. And that will take us to item number seventeen, which is a public hearing for a tentative map, TM two zero two five dash zero 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 two, and development review permit for a multifamily residential development consisting of one hundred units and related site improvements on a five-point-two-six-acre parcel located at nine five zero six Mission Gorge Road in the Town Center High Density Residential Zone and subject to SEQA Guidelines Section one five one six eight C and one five one six two, and finding no additional environmental review is required as the project is consistent with findings analyzed in the Housing Element Rezone Program, EIR, and the applicant is Borstein Enterprises.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Madeline Mattson. I'm the Principal Planner with the Planning and Building Department. This evening, I will be presenting on the Exchange Project located at nine five zero six Mission Gorge Road. Before I dive into the project details, I wanted to provide a bit of background regarding the project site. In twenty-ten, Walmart had submitted a major revision for a store expansion, including expanded parking onto the property known as the Exchange before you this evening. Environmental review began in twenty-eleven, and a draft EIR was produced in twenty thirteen. The application for the major revision was submitted in twenty sixteen and ultimately withdrawn in twenty seventeen, with no further activity by Walmart since then. The item before you tonight is a hundred-unit multifamily residential project proposed on a vacant five-point-two-six-acre lot. In twenty twenty-two, the city rezoned through the Housing Element Rezone Program from Town Center Commercial to High Density Residential R twenty-two, which allows twenty-two to thirty dwelling units per gross acre with a capacity of a hundred and fifteen units. The project as proposed complies with those density requirements. The proposed project includes eighteen three-story townhome buildings with a maximum height of thirty-eight feet six inches. The project offers units with three or four bedrooms, ranging in the size from fourteen-hundred to eighteen-hundred square feet. Each unit has its own two-car garage with separate space for storage and individual trash receptacles. On-site improvements include twenty-nine guest parking spaces and recreational amenities such as a totlot, turf area, community barbecue area, dog run, and landscaping. I wanted to note that this portion here is also being dedicated to the city, highlighted in blue. The environmental impacts associated with the proposed project were previously analyzed in the Certified Program Environmental Impact Report for the city of Sante's Housing Element Rezone Program Implementation, which is certified by the council on October twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Pursuant to SEQA guidelines, no additional environmental review is required, as the project is consistent with the development assumptions, zoning, and mitigation measures analyzed in the Rezone Program, EIR, and no significant, no new significant environmental impacts or substantially more severe effects would occur beyond those previously identified. Therefore, staff recommends that city council conduct and close the public hearing, find the project consistent with the Housing Element, PEIR, and approve the project by adopting the resolutions before you. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Speakers?
We do have one speaker slip, and I believe the applicant is here and would like to present as well.
Come on up.
As a public hearing applicant, they do have fifteen minutes.
Good evening. My name's Eric Fowler. I'm the Senior Vice President for Borstein Enterprises. And our, the property is owned actually by BEMG Santee LLC. We're the sole managing member of that property and the application. I wanted to thank both the Honorable Mayor and city council for allowing us to speak this evening about our project. I appreciate you taking this into consideration. I also wanted to thank the staff for doing a great job. They were very professional. They were thoughtful and rigorous and collaborative, and we appreciate that. We don't get that in a lot of cities. I also brought along with me some of my team. I've got my, my SEQA planner, Megan Rumford, sorry, I blew that. I've got Ray Wong from Rick Engineering and Damian Tatiano from Summa Architecture. And they'll hear if you have any technical questions. And I was also asked to just kind of give a little bit of background about our company. So here you go. See if I get this right here. So Borstein Enterprises has been in business for about forty-five years. We've been principals in over a hundred and twenty residential projects throughout Southern California. We've built eighty-three hundred homes and counting throughout the region. I specialize in urban infill residential. By the way, the pictures you're seeing up here are just some of the other projects that we have currently going and that have been recently completed. We have eleven active projects. Seventy-five percent of the projects we've done are townhomes, and they're all sold to individuals and families, all for sale. We work with only the best consultants and engineers and designers, and those were included on our team here for this project. We have a very extensive website, and it'll show off all our projects if you're interested in checking us out further. So let's get into the project a little bit. Pardon me for some of this being repetitive from what Matty just said, but this is like the perfect urban infill project for a project that's not in a big city. The location north of Mission Gorge Road and Town Center Parkway is very central. It has excellent pedestrian vehicular circulation, walking distance to shopping, dining, services, and it's, you know, quarter-mile from the River Trail, a little bit further to Mass Park. The Sante Town Center Trolley is a half-mile walk. I mean, you can't really get better than that for like urban living. And it has excellent circulation. And it has excellent circulation for cars going out, so if you're a commuter out on Mission Gorge Road. The project details, as Matty said, was it's 100 market rate units. We have this nice little area up in the upper right-hand side of the image for the children's play area and barbecue, little totlot. Here's some images of what that looks like. We have a kind of a multipurpose lawn area there. It'll be a nice place to hang out. And then we have a kind of a fenced-in little dog park area. All the homes are going to be accessed through passeos that are landscaped. This is kind of a picture of what that would look like. We have 29 guest parking spaces that exceeds code. We're going to be completing this north-south road here coming out of Mission Gorge Road, and it's going to really help the circulation in the Town Center area. We're also extending this walkway path from our northeast corner of our project over by where the Rubio's is, all the way out to Mission Gorge Road. It'll all be landscaped, a nice and comfortable place to walk. We've been asked by the Department of Engineering to modify the turning lane coming into that north-south road, shortening it on one side and lengthening it on the other. That'll be a part of our project. And then also, we're going to kind of do some additional landscaping that was described earlier, where that little area, the flagpole area, is going to be dedicated, but we're going to be doing a bunch of landscaping and upgrades there. We've reached out to the postmaster to see if we could, you know, maybe plant vines on their little wall that's there. It seems to get tagged a lot. It would be nice if maybe some greenery were on that wall that would make it harder to, you know, it'd make it look really nice. As far as the architecture is concerned, we used a local architect for this project, SUMA Architecture. We thought this project wanted to be a contemporary project because it kind of lives with all of the retail buildings in the area. We felt that the lines, the creative lines of this type of architectural style fit within this kind of environment. As for the homes, they'll range in size from 1,459 square feet, three-bedroom, three-bath units, on up to 1,817 square feet, four-bedroom, three-and-a-half bath. We really designed these units for single couples, singles and couples and families who really appreciate living in an area where they could just walk around for their daily needs. It's easy lock-and-leave living. We sell a lot of these, and they're very popular, and they're also reasonable cost for living. All the homes will include stylish finish, you know, really nice finishes, two-car attached garages, private patios. They'll all be Energy Star efficient units, sustainable-built, solar systems, and they'll have a car charger. Here's some other images of the internal circulation of the project. These are some of the internal driveways. This is an image of the north-south road. I'd really like some help naming this road, it'd be great. But some images of the road, what the project looks like. And then this is an image of the project looking from the Walmart parking lot, and it shows in the foreground the walkway. We're adding a little strip of landscaping in front of the walkway to just kind of make it look a little nicer. And that's all my presentation. Thank you for letting me make the presentation, and I'm here for questions.
Great, thank you. Questions?
Our other speaker would be Truth.
Okay.
I love speaking about housing, mostly because I like to mess with developers. Hundred units added to the 285 units from about two months ago. Sounds like a lot of traffic. Three-story townhomes stacked together like sardines for maximum profit for the big developer. The cost, likely $1 million or so apiece for little to no yard or not that much private space. Crazy people escaping LA and San Francisco who think that's a great deal and a great neighborhood compared to where they came from. Ironically, Borstein Enterprises is based in LA on Wilshire Boulevard. I love that the vehicle miles traveled exemption comes from this development being a half-mile away from the trolley, because anybody buying a $1 million smashed-in house is actually, you really think you're going to be taking the trolley? But it would be a decent walk if they wanted to take Town Center Parkway, but along Mission Gorge Road is going to be a death wish. That lack of pedestrian safety is something that should be fixed at some point, not for this complex, for everybody. It's not that great of a project on its face and its design, because I heard the bragging of the design. I find it hideous looking, but the location absolutely is a great location. But I would say if it's such an urban area, talking about urban area, you know, infill, well then put a mural on the post office, right? Because that's what you do in urban areas. The worst part is actually that there's no long-term traffic mitigation for the most congested road in the city, Mission Gorge Road. I see a huge backup coming for anyone even trying to leave the development. There needs to be some kind of new road at the back of the complex towards Walmart so the new residents have another way in and out for safety. It's also a concern that some residents may try to take up the parking spots in the nearby plazas, or maybe 100 to 400 new residents will just turn the city into a parking lot. $355,000 from development impact fees isn't nearly enough to cover what's needed: road expansion, highway expansion, and dare I say, additional highways. And you have your community profile, affordable Santee. That's not what it says on here, sorry. It says home pricing, $846,000, up 5.1%. And that's for detached, single-family. So that's not going to be, that's going to be a similar price, but oh, it's a little bit cheaper to get one of these new homes. Oh, but it's newer, it might actually be more expensive, sorry. You do have the second-lowest crime rate among 18 cities. I kind of thought it was number one. Gosh, you got to work on that. And, oh, let's see, it says median household income, the highest in East San Diego County, And you have 1,043 new housing units under construction, approved slash not built. So you have a great, a great area, but you do not have traffic solutions. You got to work on that. Thank you.
No further speakers.
Questions?
Yeah. All right, so once again, you know what my question's going to be already? Parking. What are we, what are we doing for parking? How many, how many parking spots? How many guest parking spots? Is there street parking within, or curb site parking within the development?
Sure. Let me pull up the site plan for you. So there's two parking spaces per unit, so you're at 200 parking spaces for residents, 29 guest parking spaces, which is over the requirement. There is an opportunity to provide more additional guest parking along the, I'm sorry, I didn't even realize I'm not showing my screen, I'm sorry. There's an opportunity to provide additional parking spaces along this north-south road, but they are above meeting requirement for guest parking, and they're meeting the requirement for parking for 200 parking spaces.
And we're making sure the HOAs require parking in the garages?
Yes.
No storage of?
And the CCNRs, it will include that they are required to park there, and it allows the HOA to be able to go do inspections.
We, I would suggest that we look at any way possible on that, that side road there for parking. It's going to be used. It's just is what it is. We all know now in these developments, no matter how much guest parking or extra parking, they always go over the parking. So if there's a way to maybe even do some angled parking or anything of that nature to allow, rather than just parallel parking, that could allow for more spaces, I would be very interested in making sure that happens.
We talked about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Ron?
How many of them are tandem? He can come up, I think. How many of them are going to be tandem parking?
Twenty of the units are tandem, 20%.
Okay, so 80% are two-car?
I'll go, I put actually a little slide together, you can kind of get a sense of it. If you don't mind me running through this really fast, pardon me. There we go. So you can see the site plan there, the tandems are the two-colored units in the middle on the right-hand side.
There's not a lot. I thought there was going to be more than?
That's it.
Okay.
And we needed to do that to get to that kind of density. And they're still, they're great units. In fact, those, those garages are larger than a standard 20-by-20 garage.
No, no low-income unit at all, right?
No.
Okay. The wall by Walmart, if you can go to that real, just the wall over by Walmart, so there is a wall there?
Oops.
That's, that's a wall going to be there? That's fine.
Yeah, it's actually going to be a, it's a wall, but it's made of a material that can be removed by the utilities, because we have some easements. If, if the, if the easement, you know, we've got some major utility easements that go through there.
Okay. Or if they tag it. The plants by the post office? You were talking about putting plants by the post office?
Yeah.
So my question there is, who's going to take care of those? Because we seem to have a problem with the post office taking care of the plants they have.
No, I understand. That's a good question. We, you know, that area is going to be actually in a city-dedicated area, so it'll be city land. We will, we will plant it with, we'll enhance it with a drought-tolerant pallet, we'll get it started and, and maintained, and there'll be irrigation in there. But that area is city-owned property. So we could work something out, maybe with the HOA, but, but it's...
Feel free to work something out, because the post office isn't going to take care of it.
Right. No, I understand. I mean, we're, we're used to putting together landscaping pallets so that are pretty low-maintenance at the end of the day, but I understand your comment.
So the problem we've had in that area, you can go back to probably the, showing the Walmart and the people behind the Walmart. This goes back to before I came in. The problem we've had is there are people, the noise factor that we've had. These people are going to come in, they're going to buy these nice expensive condos, and then Walmart's going to be clanking, trucks are going to be driving by, they're going to be a backup sounds, the people behind them are complaining, there's storage centers during, there's storage centers all the time now, I think.
Right.
But I mentioned the city attorney today, it's like the airport, they move into the airport, and then they go, gee, it's noisy here. Why are there airplanes flying over me? And, which is, the other thing is there is a waiver for the airport, now that I mentioned that.
Right.
But we need, I think I would make sure you had one for Walmart, too, because I guarantee you, I don't want the phone calls when, when these happen, because that's going to happen.
Yeah, when we actually purchased the property from Walmart, we actually agreed to put in a, an actual deed restriction, you know, basically notifying everybody that that is a continuing operation and, you know, so that they know when they buy the property that it's there.
Well, they're still going to complain, but at least they've got it in there.
Understood.
And then the post office is the other side.
But we do, I mean, you know, windows and insulation are better today than, you know, older homes, and, and we do a lot of infill projects in urban areas that are like this, and we haven't had much complaining, so, but, you know.
Well, on the other side, you know, if you go to show the houses on the other side now, they're, they're actually up against the post office and, and Lowe's, so we want to make sure that those are covered, too, because I just know the way it's going to happen, and, and I just want to make sure that we're protected for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I met with Matty and Wendy last week about this project because one of the first earfuls I've ever had when I was running for election the first time was about this location, what's going to happen here. And at that time, as you can see from the timeline, Walmart was looking at expanding, and the people in my neighborhood were very upset with just Walmart in general because of the sound that Councilmember Hall just mentioned. And they weren't following their CUP with the city, so they were in violation of that anyway. Fast forward to today, and I think this is what this site actually needs, and it is compatible with at least the residents that live in the area. They were very worried about the Walmart expansion. They were worried about anything going there, frankly, but I know, I asked, did we send out notifications to everybody? And, you know, the fact that there were, we did, and there were no responses back, and there's nobody from those neighborhoods, that definitely gave me an earful here tonight. Prior years, that's, it makes me happy. I, I think it's, I think the architect did a wonderful job. I wouldn't call it a urban infill, just FYI, we're suburban still, so it's just suburban infill.
All right.
Just so you know. And I think it would be fun to have the community help you name the street. And I asked, I know some people that have actually wanted to move to Santee, but they don't like that they can't walk to the stores as easily, like they want something like this, more upscale. And the fact that this is going in there, and they, I showed them the plants, the three pages that I had last week, and they're like, oh, I could walk here, I could walk, you know, so they're going to love it. They don't want to take their car out to go to the store, so I get your point totally. And one question that was asked of me by this, a couple of people that I talked to, but one person in particular, she asked, well, when you're doing the planting plan, can you plant a couple of fruit trees, like a lemon tree and a lime, you know? And I don't know the answer to that, but we were looking at landscaping.
I don't see that being a problem.
Maybe the city says...
If that's something that, you know, I mean, we, usually what we try to do is do a drought-tolerant, you know, planting pallet, generally, and fruit trees usually require a lot of water. But, you know, we're, you know, we're open to...
And they, I, same thing, I said, well, you know, they tried to do a pallet that's native and things like that. But they were just saying, well, one fruit tree, like I have a lemon tree in my backyard, it doesn't take a ton of water. I don't know. It's just an idea that was brought to me, so I'm bringing it up, and you guys can discuss where it lands, it lands, but it's just something that was asked of me. But other than that, I really think it's a great project, and I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you.
Anything, Dustin?
Second.
Okay. So here's, here's all I would say, and this is something that I always tend to talk about when it comes to these kind of projects. How clearly is the address and each individual unit marked? And for instance, is each individual unit its own address? Because we certainly saw the, you know, the address for the location. And is it like 9605, you know, A, B, C, D, or something like that? And the reason why I bring that up is because these types of, especially where they have the, sort of like an interior walkway for the doors, become very difficult for emergency responders to find out exactly where they're at. And Chief and I probably know that, and the captain know that, we've walked around many times just looking for the right address.
Right.
So I want us to work out how they're, they're identified.
In many cases, I mean, we've done it in many different ways. We work collaboratively with the fire department typically when we do these things. In other jurisdictions, sometimes we actually have to put a plaque, you know, at the entrances, you know, kind of one end of the, or the other of the project that actually shows a diagram and the unit, so that could be easily found. We also put the addresses both on the driveway side and on the interior side. So you don't, you know, you could put a number out in front of each, you know, garage door, as well as on the interior side next to the front door. So there's a couple of different ways to make that more clear for EMTs to find a particular unit.
We, we, like I said, it's not our first rodeo, but I always make sure that I bring it up, because, you know, sometimes, you know how it is, sometimes you just get really involved in a project or something like that, and all of a sudden you go, oh, wait a minute, we forgot about that. So I think we'd be negligent not bringing it up. And is this the actual color scheme? Is that a white or?
It is. It's actually, there are, there are several tones, hard to pick up in these renderings. Let me go to this image here, it's a little better. So, and this is kind of washed out, but there are, yeah, there's, it's got some whites and it's got some teals, kind of a really faint teals. I'm not good at describing colors, so pardon me, but, you know, we have a professional colorist, that's all this person does, and she colors all of our projects around, you know, Southern California. And she colors all of our projects around, you know, Southern California. She's really good. And so this project uses a lot of, you know, different kind of combinations of materials and colors and, and shapes pushing in and out to add some interest.
Yeah, and it looks like he has like some stone or something around some of them.
Right.
Stoner brick, I can't tell for sure.
Yeah, I think we turned in, you know, if you want to look at the real, like nitty gritty, we actually have an exhibit that shows all the specific materials and we have like color plotting exhibits that show like where those materials would be placed on the buildings and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah. The only reason why I even talk about the light colors is because of the fact that you do have flat roofs. And sometimes you have water that will tend to pool.
Right.
It just happens. And that can, you know, stream down the side and discolor and make an ugly project. So I want to make sure that, you know, we do the best we can to prevent that.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, especially being in HOA, because HOAs aren't always on top of things as well as they should be just because of money issues. So, but I do like the project, I like the idea where it's at. It's going to make a whole difference to that neighborhood. So, and the illegal activity that used to go on on that property, so.
Yeah, we've had it fenced. We actually installed a video camera in there for the last year while we've owned it. And so when we first bought the property, we had some squatters out there and we had to chase off.
Right. Okay. Great, thanks.
One thing on the addresses though, feel free to overdo it.
Okay.
All right then.
All right, thank you.
I have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And that takes us to item number 18, which is a resolution awarding the construction contract to Barnhart Rees Construction Incorporated for the Santee Community Center project adopting a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Who put that together? That's a heck of a tongue twister.
It is a tongue twister, sir. Sometimes the language we have to get through to get projects through.
Be Mr. Miller. All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. I know.
Well, that was a tongue twister herself, right?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Stephen Miller, Principal Civil Engineer with the Engineering Department. Tonight I'll be presenting on the award of contract, environmental documents and funding for the Santee Community Center. First, I wanted to start off by saying this project has been long in the making. For staff, our consultants, our City Council Subcommittee members, that we really do want to thank for all of the effort that was put into this project with Councilmembers McNallys and Koval. First, I'd like to start off with a background on the project. The Santee Community Center was identified as a needed project in the city's general plan and park and recreation master plan back in April of 1990. At that time, to construct a project of this size, there was no available funding source for the project. And basically, the only funding source we deemed necessary that could work for this would be development impact fees. Those fees were programmed towards the mid 1990s to go forward towards the project. And the project was included in the 2018-2022 Capital Improvement Program budget. Design started in October 2021 and was completed this August 2025. We bid the project in August and we received bids this November. And tonight, we're here for the award of the construction contract. Some of the project features and uses for the Santee Community Center is this project will be a 12,500 square foot, two-story building. It'll house an event center and multipurpose rooms with the event center having the ability to divide in two separate large public gathering areas. It'll have a commercial warming kitchen. It'll serve as a city's backup emergency operations center, a backup IT data center in times of need, as a backup solely to city hall center. It'll provide food service, parking for events, for weddings and other recreational events, not only in the back of the facility where we have seating areas, but also for options in the front parking lot area. It has a four-tier amphitheater seating, which is a small seating area primarily for small gatherings. It has a solar PV system, EV charging, and also has a backup generator to provide power not only for emergency events, but it's also a pretty good thing to have for a facility of this size. If you have a large program event and there was a power outage, the building could still be fully powered. The design in this facility was to be a multi-generational facility that was modern. It had flexible spaces and it was designed for youth, teen, senior programs, weddings, recreational events, catering events, conventions, corporate events, and really anything that this community would need for a large center and gathering. This slide here is showing the first floor plan layout. With on the left side of this drawing is where the entrance of the public would come in, kind of identified as a number one. This area will house entrance area where members will come in to make reservations. Staff will be on this area as also as well as the restrooms and utility services with the bulk of the use of the building on the eastern end. This eastern portion of the building can house up to 450 people in large events or split in half with two separate event rooms that can hold 160 persons with an outside patio deck that can hold another 120 persons. To the northeast or top right of this display is the commercial warming kitchen with some utility rooms directly south of that. And then to the southern area is a patio area that's going to overlook the Woodland Vista Creek Channel. This slide is the second floor of the structure. With most of the features that are open to the public will be on the left-hand side. With item number two is the event space as a multipurpose room that can be used for any multitude item of events and programs with a large outdoor deck labeled as item 15 below. To the left of this exhibit, we kind of show some color renderings of the entrance foyer where residents and visitors would come in, they could check in, go up the grand staircase up to the upper multipurpose room and outdoor deck, or they would exit to the left to go towards the large event center room. The rendering below is more of a, the artistic rendering of what the view would be from the upstairs patio deck looking out towards Town Center Community Park East and the Woodland Vista Creek Channel. In regards to the construction contract, this project was bid with bids received on November 13th. The lowest bid was submitted by Barnhart Rees Construction in the amount of $20,598,331. Staff determined that the bid submitted by Barnhart Rees Construction was deemed responsive and responsible. Staff recommends City Council award the construction contract to Barnhart Rees Construction Incorporated. Additionally, staff is recommending authorization for the Director of Engineering and City Engineer to approve change orders to not exceed $3,089,749, which is 15% of the total contract amount for unforeseen items and additional work. This amount requested is to help cover costs that are unforeseen in construction and do additional improvements in the parking areas of the community center lot. Most importantly, would be to address some repairs to Corten steel fencing upgrades that are needed along the Woodland Vista Creek Channel and also on the southern parking lot at Town Center East as both parking lot structures are going to be used to kind of feed parking for this facility. The project schedule, this project will require to be constructed in two phases. As many people are aware, right now, there's a single parking lot where we're putting this community center building in. Phase one will construct a new parking lot in the grass open area on the north side of the Cameron Family YMCA. Once this is completed, all parking for the YMC operations will move into the new parking lot and we'll start on the phase two construction of the actual community center building itself. The parking lot construction is anticipated to start this February and be completed in June. And then the building construction would start in June 2026 and require about 14 months to construct and be completed in September 2027. Construction completion is anticipated in October 2027, which we anticipate about a one-month period after construction is completed to get the Community Services Department, staff and other people that are going to operate this facility used to it, get the IT data centers up and running, make sure that the items that are required for the backup generators, fire operational needs, if we need as a backup EOC is ready to go and open to the public in November 2027. Project funding, as we're all aware, facilities of this size are very expensive, especially for cities of this size. Funding for the project was included in the fiscal year 2630 adopted capital improvement program budget in the amount of $23.5 million. In April this year, City Council approved a short-term interfund loan in the amount of $3.3 million from general fund reserves for the project. This loan would be paid back by public facility and Park and Lou development impact fees as they are received to offset the general fund costs and appropriation to complete the project. And I wanted to note that public facility and Park and Lou development impact fees are restricted solely for park and facility projects and we cannot use those funding for any other sources in the city, which is why staff had recommended that this would be one of the best funding opportunities to get this project completed with the least burden to the city's general fund. With the received bids, as I made aware, the adopted CIP budget had $23.5 million. The total project cost is about $26 million and change. So we would need an increase in the previously approved interfund loan balance for a total of $6.6 million to fully fund the project based on the received bids that we had. And the increased interfund loan is projected to be fully repaid back by fiscal year 2829 based on the current development projected for the city. Here's a project funding summary to kind of outlay where all of the funds for this project are. We have $156,000 and change provided the American Rescue Plan Act. General fund appropriation of $1.5 million. Estate grant that we received several years back with help of ex-mayor Randy Vopel as Assembly Member at that time for $4.5 million. And development impact fees totaling $20,600,000 and change for the total anticipated project cost of $26.8 million. And noting here that the $20 million includes the interfund loan amount that would be repaid back to the general fund reserves. As part of this project, environmental review is completed. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared. The MND concluded that impacts to air quality, biology, geology, cultural and paleontological resources and noise will be mitigated to below significance. The MND was circulated for review in April to May of this year. 10 written comments were received with no new environmental issues were raised other than the items that were already addressed in the MND. The final MND, including a mitigated monitoring and reporting program, has been prepared. And that program is essentially to ensure that during construction of the project, it complies with the items identified in the MND. With that, staff is recommending City Council award the construction contract for the Santee Community Center to Barnhart Rees Construction in the amount of $20,598,000. Authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents. Authorize the Director of City Engineer to approve change orders for the project not to exceed $3,089,749. Increase the Santee Community Center budget appropriation. Approve the use of up to approximately $6.6 million on as-needed basis in the general fund reserves as an interfund loan to fund the project, which would be backfed by public facility and Park and Lou development impact fees. And then authorize the repayment of the general fund loan and adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the project. With that, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Let's go to a speaker's slip.
We have one speaker. Truth?
Barnhart Rees Construction is very lucky, $26.8 million. I want to know, why did the project cost increase by $3 million since April? It's only a few months ago. Is that Trump's fault? Did he do something with tariffs? Or is it remnants of Biden inflation? Or did staff simply underestimate again? So I keep recommending, just overestimate so he can be right. What wasn't covered, is there a project labor agreement? Because I'm really hoping that that's not going to happen. Good. I'm glad it's a local San Diego-based company. But one thing to consider is that Barnhart Rees Construction has not finished the East Village Green Project in downtown San Diego on schedule. It has allegedly, it was allegedly going to be done this year and it's been sitting for years with almost zero work done. I've been watching it over the years, I guess, at this point. To be fair, I think that's mostly on the city of San Diego. There are multiple failures in Sandag as well. And I actually learned that from Sandag Regional Planning Committee. For the record, the state of California increases the cost to build by default by having unnecessary tests and fees on everything, including like your nesting, nesting bird surveys. It's like, no wonder you can't get anything affordable here. I also found a misspelling under section five on page 258 of the agenda packet on the word magnolia. Part of the city's address. Oh, how dare you, somebody forgot the letter A. That's major breaking news. That might, is it, does that count as like a environmental issue? Maybe not. Okay. Because I was going to say, maybe there's no way the community center can be approved now. But I do have a question about the design, because the pictures are way too small. You just take up the whole screen next time would be my preference, even if you have more slides. But I had a question, because I heard stairs. So is there going to be an elevator? Or is there going to be ADA ramp? Because it has to be accessible. Just hoping, if somebody's considered that in the design. Thank you.
All right, let's go, that was it, right?
Yes, sir.
Who wants to go first on the dais? Any questions?
I will. All right, so I've seen comments on social media and stuff, so this is actually to our city attorney. What assurances do taxpayers have that this interfund loan will be paid back with future funds to the general fund and that general fund funds will actually not be used for this? It'll actually truly all come from the Park and Lou fees and facilities fees?
Yeah, I mean, it's like any loan, you're just doing it to yourself. But it's clearly an obligation that the money will be repaid back through the sources that are identified in here.
So it is a legal obligation?
Yep.
That we have to do that once those funds are freed up from the development that's already in process? It's just not at the point yet where we get those funds into our account?
Right. We just, we don't have them now. We anticipate receiving them in the future. They will be allocated to the payoff, the general fund.
Thank you. Yeah, of course, I don't know how many times we beat this horse to death about chasing the cost and it does continue to increase even though last time it was, we were sure. And this, then it increased again. So it is, we, we've got to get this locked in, get it done. Otherwise, we're going to be chasing this forever and it's, the funds will be a waste at this point. So I am in support of this and recommend, I make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Dustin, do you have anything?
Yes, I'd like to hear from our traffic engineer about the impacts.
Who's the traffic engineer? You might have to identify yourself for the record.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm Jeff Morgan, the new principal traffic engineer for the city, starting last.
That's good enough, thanks.
Welcome.
Is there a?
That's our way of saying welcome. Is that it? Okay. Laura?
Yes, I guess it has been a long time coming since 1990, apparently. But I'm glad this council's finally able to get it over the finish line. Congratulations to the staff and everybody that worked on this architecture. It's going to be a beautiful facility. I did look up Barnhart Rees. I wasn't familiar with their work. I don't know if the city's worked with them before on a project in the city.
I was going to say, I did reach out to the city of San Diego and I spoke with one of the project engineers that one of the speakers had mentioned. They were highly recommended by them and they were a good contractor. And what I was told the delays were, were utilities.
Oh, well.
So that was a big part of the delays. And he had asked us, you know, and he said, yeah, he's confident in their abilities. So that was encouraging when I reached out.
That's great. I did look up online to see if they had any, you know, the things you would look for. And their reviews came back really high. So that was promising. And some of the other chatter that has been online besides the funding sources. So thank you, Steve, for really clarifying that. Once again, I know we've, we've talked about it, it seems like every single time, but there's just still that misinformation. Why are you spending money on this when you could be, you know, fixing the roads? And this is, this is Park and Lou fees, not for roads, and it's dedicated to that. And I think it's just going to be a great benefit for the city. Thank you also for. Thank you also for stating upfront that the YMCA parking lot will be done first. I know that's very important to the people that go to the YMCA, me included. And full disclosure, I did see you guys out there when you were doing your review with the different contractors, but I had just gotten out of the pool, so I was not saying And also, the other comment is about, you know, there, at one time, community centers were built with a little room for the seniors and a little room for the teens and a little room for this, and it was a segmented facility. And in modern-day park and recreation facilities, that's just not how they're built, and for good reason. And I used to be a part of that world in my professional career, and it just so happens that one of our CPRS regional meetings was in the city of Poway, and we visited their community center, which had the flexible spaces, so it could accommodate a big meeting that we had there, but then also, you know, different activities for different age groups. And it was a beautiful, it is a beautiful facility. So I think ours is going to be better, and that's just my bias, but if there wasn't a second to the motion, I would be honored to second it.
Thank you, Ron.
If there was, then I'll third it.
We have a motion to second, so we're good. Ron?
Okay, I had sent you a list of questions earlier today, and I appreciate you guys answering them so fast. That was really nice of you. My biggest concern is, here we are again, looking for money, and Truth kind of brought it up first, but the reality is, is that was one of the questions, is are we going to be back in next April looking for another 3 million? I want to make sure that this is it. And again, I understand that you haven't spent the money yet, and I understand it may not run that much, but the reality is, is we don't need to have this going. I call it the bullet train of Santee, but the reality is, I don't want this to go anymore. So we either need to work within the budget, they need to do their job and make sure it's done, we don't need delays. And that could be, you know, it could be utilities, and we need to work with the utilities, finally get the rear ends out there, because we've dealt with that before. And so let's, let's make sure that this goes smoothly, let's make sure we don't go over budget again. You know, this is twice now, so let's make sure we don't go over again, and let's make sure that it's done correctly, please.
Yes, sir. I would like to follow up on the, on the cost of the project coming up, because that's obviously, we had a price, and we had the increase in what was 3 million. The original budget request we had was for 10% change orders. In our request was for 15%, we added 5%, which in a project of this size is a million dollars. That was only because we were using development impact fees that we saw could do measurable improvements to the community center site and the parking lot at Town Center East. And the things that we would like to get done with this project would be removal of the failed lodgepole fencing that a lot of the community members do not like, replacing that with more a cable rail Corten steel fence on those perimeters. We're looking at adding additional wayfinding signs, things that we see from the community as, hey, Town Center Park is huge. I'm walking on this trail. We'd like to see signage that kind of says, go this way, go that way for the YMCA, Sportsplex USA, Town Center West Ballfields. So we're looking at wayfinding signage that we could add to the project, similar to what was provided in the Arts and Entertainment District, because it all flows with the same concept. Some other areas that we're looking at is, with the large data center that we're going to have in the structure, is getting CCTV cameras south to Town Center East to give a little more security, because we know there's concerns about trail security, but also just general park security. And when the original park was construction, or constructed, we didn't have the backbone for IT to store that video, bring it back to law enforcement. This would give us the opportunity to do that. So though we did request the additional change orders, that's not money considered spent. It's just giving us the opportunity to do that and have development impact fees pay for that, in lieu of us coming back in future CIPs and having the city's general fund fund those types of projects.
Will they be paid back yearly, or will they be paid back as, as they come up? Or how will they be paid out?
The fees would come in, yeah, we would repay that back as they are received.
Okay. All right.
All right, now, can you bring up a slide showing floor plan number one or the first floor? Okay. So here's-
One more slide, sir.
Well, that one-
The image file's large.
This one, this one, this works. Okay, so right where I see the letter A at the very top, and then shows, is that a gate going across there with doors? Right below it?
So that's just more of a hatch, the dash line you're seeing is to show what the large roof overhead projection is. So if you look at the image to the top left, the roof extends out over the buildings to show that. The double doors that you're seeing are the glass entrance foyer doors that will lead into the entrance of the building.
Okay, so at nighttime, that's locked?
That is locked, yes.
Okay, and, because where I'm going with this is, so this is completely, there's no, how do I want to say this? There's nobody that's going to be in there that's able to camp, because it's going to all be locked up at nighttime, with the exception of the exterior of the project.
Correct. And the doors are also going to have automatic locking doors with magnetic system, similar like what we have at City Hall. So the doors can be automatically programmed when, when we're no longer open to the public, boom, they're locked, and the only people who can get in will be members of staff with RFID key access points.
And is that the only ingress that has the glass doors, or glass walls that go across?
No, just south of that, down to where the other letter A, that's another double glass door with a glass facade wall, because if you go south, that's going to lead to the promenade that leads to the existing Corten Steel Pedestrian Bridge that we have that jumps over to Town Center East. And so the goal was, if visitors are coming, you could park in the parking lot out front, you could park in Town Center East, and we had two pathways to walk in towards the facility.
Do those, those walls go from the ground to the ceiling?
Ground to ceiling on those, on that front foyer area only, which is identified as Room 1 of the lobby.
Okay.
The other walls on the east and the west are solid walls with, with windows in them indoors.
Okay, I got you. Because I was going to say, if there are only like half walls just to keep somebody out, it'd be a lot cheaper to put in a wrought iron fence or something.
No.
Okay, I got you then. That makes sense to me. That's, that's all, the only question I had, but other than saying that, I think it's a great project. I'm glad to see it finally happening, and it'd be one project I can say we completed before I was out of office.
Thanks.
Okay. Anything else, anybody? Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember, hold, can you lock in your vote? Motion carries unanimously.
Quit thinking. Thanks, Mr. Miller. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, this is, takes us to item number 18, I mean, not 19, I'm sorry. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending Title 11 Building and Construction of Santee Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2025 California Building Standards Code, including the 2025 California Administrative Code, the 2025 California Building Code, the 2025 California Residential Code, and a whole bunch of other, I'm not going to read them all here, so, but this is an absolute necessity for us-
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have any speaker slips?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Smart move.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Well, that's the fastest you've presented. All right, this takes us to item number 20, it's a public hearing, consideration of urgency ordinance. It requires a four-fifths vote required. And public hearing and first reading of a regular ordinance amending Title 13, Chapter 10, Section 045 of the Santee Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units to comply with the recent changes in state law and finding the actions to be statutorily exempt from SEQA under Public Records Act Code 21080.17. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. As in prior years, the state has again enacted year-end legislation addressing local government authority over accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Again, the mandate is that if local ordinances are not adopted to reflect the new laws by the end of the year, the local ordinances will be invalid as of January 1st, and the city's ability to address ADU development will be limited to the narrow provisions otherwise granted by state law. So to prevent this from happening, thanks, James, we are recommending a two-step approach that will allow the changes to go into effect immediately this evening for a short period of time, while the process for the changes to be made permanent continues through the regular ordinance process. So step one would be the adoption of an urgency ordinance, and step two will be the adoption of a regular ordinance at your first meeting in January, and I'll get a little more specificity on the requirements for each. All right, James, could you skip this one? We'll come back to the actual laws that are changing. To the procedure, if the city's ordinance does not comply with these new laws by January 1st, the current ADU regulations, which are found in the municipal code at Section 13, 10, 045, and it is in the zoning code portion of the code, so if we don't update that by the first of the year, all of what we currently have in our ordinance will be null and void. If that were to happen, we would obviously lose the ability to address matters like ADU size, height, setbacks, parking, things like that that are covered in the ordinance right now. It's fair to say probably that, well, you can, this is what we'll ask you to find if you, to go forward, that without the regulations currently included in the municipal code, ADU development will change the character of existing neighborhoods and negatively impact property values, personal privacy, and fire safety, and that therefore, there is a current and immediate threat to the public health, safety, and welfare, which is the standard to approve an urgency ordinance. Okay, yes, thank you. So it's four new bills that are requiring this update. They are somewhat technical, but, and are intended to both clarify and of course add new requirements to ADU development. Brief, I'll go through them briefly and then be happy to answer any questions about them, or go through the specific changes to the ordinance if you like. So AB 462 is called the Coastal Development Permits Bill, and it, obviously, the bulk of this bill does not apply to Santee, since we are not a coastal development area, but the part that would apply would come into play in the event of a disaster. Generally, ADU certificates of occupancy cannot be issued until after the certificate of occupancy for a primary dwelling. In this case, if certain conditions related to a local disaster are present, a certificate of occupancy for a detached ADU can be issued before one is issued for the primary dwelling. So it's a minor change, but it will be helpful if and when needed. AB 1154 addresses junior accessory dwelling units. It makes two changes. The first is that by state law, this is already the law in Santee, that JADUs cannot be used as short-term rentals. So that is our rule already, it is now also the law statewide. The other change to the JADUs is that the current rule that a property owner has to live in either the JADU or the primary dwelling does not apply if the two units do not share a bathroom. So let me put that in the positive. Properties that include a JADU, the owner does not need to live in either the JADU or the primary residence if the two pieces of the building do not share a bathroom. Does that make sense?
Plumbing for the bathroom, or just a bath?
Plumbing, sanitary, sanitation, yeah, the actual sanitation.
The water closet.
Pardon?
The water closet.
Yes, yes, thank you. So those are the changes to the JADU. Senate Bill 543 and SB 9, in a different version than what we usually talk about that for, seek to impose a penalty on cities that do not timely share their updated ADU ordinances with the Department of Housing and Community Development. Santee is not in that category. The rule, the law is that you need to send an updated ADU ordinance to HCD within 60 days of adoption. Now, if you fail to do so, they will, they can invoke a penalty, which is, again, declaring the local ordinance to be null and void. But that's never been an issue here, and it won't be.
I have a question about that. When they declare the local ordinance null and void, that means it's null and void forever?
Yeah. It means null and void until you go through this process again.
So really, if we didn't have all this done by January 1st, we could do it in February? Or the first meeting in January? And then we would go back to our ordinances and our restrictions and rules?
Yes.
I don't know what the penalty is, really.
So-
A couple of weeks?
Well, I mean, the risk is that somebody will come in and request an ADU, and since the rules on the books during that interim time, January 1st to whatever the final ordinance becomes effective, they would not have to follow the rules in the ordinance as it is written right now.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the risk.
Okay. Not as, not as dire.
It's not, yeah, I mean, it's-
Well, I like to say, though, that it could be, because there could be a developer out there who is just looking for that opportunity, because they can get right around everything. And let's say they come in and say, we want to put in two dozen ADUs, and we really don't have any control over that. That would, that would be the only thing.
Well, I mean, for these things, though, that's not the scenario I see here for these four items listed. But it was, I think, I believe the governor signed this on 10-10?
I think that sounds right, yes.
And so was there a reason that this couldn't have been brought forward in the November meeting, council meeting? Is that not enough time to get?
This was a lot of work for-
Is this something that we track? Do we track these kind, because it seems like ADUs come up every year, and there's some kind of tweak at the state level. So do we track them through and say, okay, it looks like this is-
Absolutely.
That, that's what I was curious about. I mean, yes, if it was some kind of nefarious thing, and the evil developers were waiting in the wings for the cities that didn't comply for a couple of weeks, and then, you know, maybe that bought them a couple of months of time, you certainly should have an emergency ordinance to stop that gap. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it tonight, I'm just saying that, like, in the future, perhaps we should just be more prepared for these things and get them done as much as possible in November, so we don't have to do an emergency ordinance. Like, what if someone was sick?
Councilmember, I'm sorry, I mean, we do track this, and just the way with the first and second reading and then 30 days, you, this is the best practice, and this is what cities who are on top of this stuff do. They do exactly what we're doing. So, yeah, I mean, it'd be great if we could get out in front even more, but it's almost impossible to do that. I mean, we, we, we have a team that this is basically all they do. I mean, and you know how, like, I'm hoping that Tari doesn't have to go through the rest of this, because it's really mind-numbing, and it's really super technical and very hard to get through. So, yeah, we can try to bring it forward earlier, but I think every year they do this, you're going to be, we're going to be doing this process, and it's the process we've been following.
Okay, well, that's, that's a fair statement. Like, if you just tell us, council, you know, we're going to need to do this for every year for these ADUs.
That's what we've done the last three years, I think.
I know, and that's why I'm asking this time, because I'm only understanding it as an emergency ordinance and not your explanation behind it. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah. And- Yeah, and then, you know, again, if we, if we could get out in front of it, we will, but I think this is unfortunately the world we're living in right now, where it's very easy to write a bill that's super complicated and technical, and we're all scramble, and we're going to be scrambling pretty much every year until something changes in Sacramento. And I'm sorry for that because usually it's right around the holidays, and the last thing you want to do is be talking about this stuff right now, but I think we're going to be, unfortunately.
Are there other housing laws like this that you see will need emergen, or is it just going to be, I just recall ADUs?
It's mostly ADUs, but this remedy that they like to throw in about, like, kind of giving you a little bone of local control but then grabbing it away?
Yeah.
If you don't kind of scramble like we're doing, is sort of their preferred method right now. So it may come up in other situations. I mean, but it's mostly right now in this whole micromanaging ADU issue.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Keep in mind, anytime HCD is involved, that there's some kind of, I'm going to call it scheme or scam behind it. I don't know if I can get sued for saying that, but I got my attorney here. Ron, anything?
I'll make a motion to approve. We have a choice. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just, she wasn't done with it.
Yeah, I'm like, I'd like to listen to her.
Oh, okay.
Finish this right here.
Sorry.
Okay.
Well, it seemed like we got so far down.
Changes are with the ADU size, I'd like to, and the number, I'd like to hear this.
Yeah, so the last one, Senate Bill, this is 543 again. This is where a lot of the detailed changes come in, so I'll highlight a couple for you. It clarifies that the size of a JADU is to be measured by the square footage of the interior living space. So we just added that to the definition in the ordinance. Clarification that the size of JADUs and ADUs are to be measured by the square footage of the interior living space for purposes of determining whether development impact fees apply. As you might recall from last year, ADUs that are 750 square feet and less, smaller, are exempt from development impact fees. So this is just tweaking how you measure that 750 square feet. So you have to go with the interior measurements, interior living space. They also clarify that ADUs and JADUs with fewer than 500 square feet of interior living space are exempt from school impact fees. I know that doesn't apply here, but that was also a big question and concern for this past year, both with cities that needed to make sure those were paid and counties and the schools who wanted to make sure that, so now if they're smaller, there's no school impact fees. Clarification that the four categories of ADUs created under the government code, which include converted and detached ADUs in the single-family arena and converted and detached in the multifamily arena, those are the four categories. Now, a lot with a multifamily dwelling can now have a converted ADU or ADUs created under the statute and detached ADUs created under the next provision of the statute, and a lot with a single-family dwelling can now have a converted ADU and a JADU created under section, the same, 66323 is the statute, and a detached ADU created under 66323. This just gives you an example of how mind-numbing, you know, linking the city's code to these provisions can be, but it basically allows for more ADUs than previously. And then finally, it imposes new deadlines on planning staff to review and to declare as complete an application for an ADU. So there's new processes and procedures added to 1310045 that make the initial completeness review tied to a 15-day requirement, or you give a list of why it's not complete, and then there's a series of, you know, the rest of the traditional review period, but now there's also an appeal process. If there's a denial, there's a right to appeal, and so that's set forth as well. Happy to go into more detail or point out to you in the staff report, or the attachment of the redlined version of the changes to this ordinance is included in the staff report. Happy to go through how we incorporated these things there, if you would like. Otherwise, I think we can take you to Staus' recommendation, which is to adopt the urgency ordinance tonight, which requires a four-fifths vote. Open, conduct, and close the public hearing for the amendments to the zoning code. This is the standard ordinance procedure, first step. Introduce and conduct a first reading of the ordinance, and then set and conduct a second reading of the ordinance on January 14th, 2026. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
No speakers? And any other question? Okay.
Mine was, I actually talked to our city manager, Wendy, about this, but for staff, maybe Sandy, meaning the 15-day requirement, and I just asked how feasible it was and what the process would be for that, so maybe you could explain it. She sent me an email, but if you could explain it.
Yeah, sure. So when the ADU applications are, come in, our building tucks usually review them to surface, like, did everything get submitted? Did the plans even get uploaded? So that's a cursory review that we do at intake, but then if we do have, like, what we think it needs to be done, then we'll route it to all the divisions and departments, and we specify exactly how much time they have to review. So we'll say, you have 10 business days to review it, which allows the building tucks, when they receive all the comments, to come back to look at them, make sure there isn't any inconsistencies, and then submit that back to the applicant. And that would be the same process for the initial application itself and for any resubmittals. So it will accelerate our timelines. Now, we usually have 30 days, but it's kind of this pattern, as Sean mentioned, of, you know, the legislature making decisions to ensure for mostly homeowners, you know, that we get them quick responses of what they're trying to do with their ADUs.
And how many departments would an ADU go through in the city?
So you'd go through building, you'd go through fire, I'm just trying to think off the top of my head, wouldn't go to sheriff, sorry. You would go to engineering, you'd go to traffic, you know, you'd do a cursory review just to make sure there isn't anything that they would need. So you'd go through quite a few departments. But Intergov allows us that opportunity to track it and see when it's due. And again, here we're looking for completeness, we're not looking for consistency, which are kind of two different things, right? So they're just saying, as a department, do I have everything I need in order to review this quickly? And if not, tell me what else that they need. And then, after it's deemed complete, you would do a consistency review where you really dig into everything that's been submitted and determine at that time whether or not it could be approved or denied.
And then, you know, I know there's different designs for these, and you're probably used to working with some certain developers, and now that the interior space of 750 square feet is in, you know, it's, is measured by interior space now? Does that complicate things? Is there a formula that you go by, or is, how does it work?
It actually makes it a little bit easier because it's more about clarity, you know? Do you look inside? Do you look outside? And other jurisdictions handle it differently. So I think the intent is just to say, okay, all jurisdictions use interior, and that's the clarification. So I, I don't think that people are going to have a problem with it. I think instead they're just going to appreciate the clarity of not trying to go from jurisdiction to jurisdiction and figure out how it's calculated. But ADUs, for the most part, in our experience, are not necessarily developers. It really is, you know, somebody trying to put something in their backyard, and so they appreciate knowing exactly how it's calculated in the quick turnarounds.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? All right, do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
And we will make sure it gets sent to HCD.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item number 21, which is a resolution authorizing the city to execute a contract with Fire Trucks Unlimited, a wholly-owned subsidiary of Brindley Mountain Fire Apparatus to refurbish vehicle 138, a 2005 Pierce Arrow. What's the XT stand for?
That was their model.
Okay.
Number. I don't know that it stands for anything.
All right. So we're going to authorize the transfer and appropriation of $803,260.33 from the General Fund Reserves to the fiscal year 2025-26 Vehicle Replacement Fund operating budget. Fire chief.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. So as you mentioned, this item is to refurbish V138, which is pictured here. It's our 2005 Pierce Arrow. It's our currently frontline reserve fire engine. Back on September 24th, you received a more detailed presentation on kind of the refurbishment concept and why we were interested in bringing that forward. At that time, direction was given to staff to return with a formal proposal for consideration. So the proposal tonight, it is a total project cost of $803,261, delivery timeline of approximately nine months for completion, and that's compared to a new engine order, which was priced out at about $1.238 million, yeah, $1.238 for a comparable engine and a timeline of 49 to 52 months. That $803,000 includes a 15% contingency for the refurbishment work, so approximately $68,000. The initial payment would be due on April 1st of 2026, and that will guarantee our production timeline starting on August 1st, and that will also allow the vendor to begin the procurement process for the parts necessary so they're ready to go when they receive our fire engine. Will begin on August 1st, 2026, completion by April 1st of 2027, and it'll be funded through the transfer of funds from the General Fund Reserves to the Vehicle Replacement Fund. Upon completion, this quick snapshot of our fleet status, we'll have our frontline type 1 engines. Our oldest in service frontline would be Engine 4, the 2016 engine. Engine 5 will be the refurbished V138. Engine 20 is the new type 1 that's going to be delivered to the city this January. We'll have two reserve type 1 fire engines, 2014 and 2011 model year, and maintaining those two reserve engines will give us some flexibility for future research, future refurbishment consideration, and also for, you know, potential fire station options for a fourth fire station deployment. So our recommendations are to adopt the resolution authorizing the refurbishment of V138 through Fire Trucks Unlimited, authorize the transfer and appropriation of $803,260.33 from General Fund Reserves to the Vehicle Replacement Fund, and the additional recommendations included in the council agenda statement. I'll make a motion to approve.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah. I just actually want to say thank you to Harley, and I know it's, you've been doing the research on this for quite some time, and you were a little apprehensive about even bringing this at one point. I just can't commend you enough for looking for ways to save the city money while still making sure that your department has the tools that it needs to do the job and do it well. So thank you, thank you very much for that, and I just want, I hope that the rest of the city, the citizens of the city, get to see what, what it is you're doing and how you're doing it, so that they recognize that it's, you know, fire department's not just trying to spend and take, you're here as part of the city, as part of the city family, to do what's right for the city while also protecting the citizens of the city. So thank you very, very much, man. Appreciate it. And I'll second the motion.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Laura?
No, thank you, chief.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. That takes us to item number 22, which is a selection of mayor pro tem, or also known as vice mayor. And this is what we do every single year because everything's on a rotating basis. However, what I want to say is that the current vice mayor, council member, Rob McNellis from District 1, he's finishing his one-year term as the vice mayor, and it actually takes place today on December 10th. No, I'm not going to read all this off. I, you know, I just want to say, you know, Rob, this is, you and I, we used to play tag every single year on doing, so this has got to be like six or seven for you, and, you know, every year it's a little bit different, and I appreciate you filling in and even taking over some of the meetings when I couldn't be here, out of town on business or whatever. And we're going to give you another little plaque, and so my guess is that you probably will have one now for each of the rooms, either in your office or your home, and so, but I, even though I say that, I'm very kind of flippant about it, and because every single time that we have somebody that does this, it just creates a little bit more work for you, and not that you're afraid of a lot of work, because I've known you long enough, but it, you deserve to have the appreciation and recognition for doing the job as vice mayor. And the plaque has a city seal on it, and says, Rob McNellis, City of Santee, Vice Mayor for 2025. I want to say thank you.
Thank you, buddy. Thank you. I spelled my name wrong.
Don't look at me.
It's my fault.
Couple of years ago, they put the wrong year for me.
That wasn't me.
But I got, I got an extra one that one.
And after all this time, we can still take a little bit of ribbing. Well, maybe sometimes. All right, then. So now we kind of don't have a vice mayor, so we're going to have to do something about that. So what I'm going to do is make a recommendation that, who actually is the next in line, is Councilmember Ron Hall from District 2 to serve as the vice mayor beginning December 11th, 2025, and I'll make that motion. Is there a second or a comment? Oh, well, do we have any speaker slips?
We do have one speaker mayor. Truth.
Almost forgot you.
You said something about liking ribbing, so see, I, I can, I can just see the future. It's amazing. So you're talking about playing tag. I was really wondering, like, were you guys really playing tag like children? I could see it. I don't know, I think Ron can probably undo you, but that was interesting. So, Ron, I have to think about, is Ron qualified? So I was thinking, well, sometimes he's absent, sometimes he's too slow to make a motion, and I have complaints about that. Let's see, oh, sometimes he talks out of order. That happened tonight, technically. Let's see, oh, okay, but he has consistencies as well, consistently does not play games. I like that. Cares about animals, that's very appreciated. Answers questions, even if it's out of order, I appreciate it. Oh, he's got a nice tie on tonight. Could be more festive, could have Christmas trees on it or snowmen, or it could be candy stripes, you know? Oh, let's see. Oh, but he's going to be second in charge, so it could be potentially disaster waiting to happen if Minto is absent from something, whether that's here. I mean, imagine if he's absent from Sandag. I don't know. No, okay, good, okay, good. We've got that covered. All right, Laura's gonna, all right, good. But wait, what if Laura's absent? See?
Then, then you're in trouble. Then the C team's in.
Yeah, he's going to vote for somebody we don't like or something that just doesn't go right. I could see it. And, yeah, the last meeting, you don't even want to know what down, what went down in the last one. It was like we went back in time, but it's on my mind, sorry. So the, the last question is, are you going to play musical chairs? Are you going to, how come you guys stay in the same spots? A lot of cities switch their spots, and then I like to joke about musical chairs, but you guys just stay stagnant, I guess, is what I'm saying. But, yeah. Well, yeah, you could take the exit, that's one way to go. I'm going to, I'm going to take an exit. Thank you.
By the way, we're not stagnant, we're consistent.
I'll second the motion.
All right, then, all in favor, let's vote. Yeah, you can vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. I didn't try. All right, then, that takes us to non-agenda public comment.
No speakers, sir.
No speakers. All right, let's go to city council reports. Ron?
I have a report.
Okay, Laura?
I don't have a report, Ron.
Wow.
Did I hear applause?
Well, I've got it for you, actually. This is my 17 minutes of fame.
No, it's not.
I don't have a report, Ron.
Wow.
Did I hear applause?
Well, I've got it for you, actually. This is my 17 minutes of fame.
No, it's not.
I would like to bring up a couple of things. One is we had the SLMSA, which Mr. Trotter and I and Laura all attended. It was a 50th anniversary for the SLMSA slash CSA 69, so 50 years they've been around, so it was nice. Attended a whole bunch of meetings, of course. We had the Shadow Hill ribbon cutting, so the new park over in Shadow Hill. We all had, went to, Laura and I went to the VECA lunch, that's for the veterans. We went, saw that. Randy Lenick on the, and there's a couple other speakers, were speaking at the Firefighters' Awards. That night, she went to one item, one place, and I went to a toaster for Neil Moore, 35 years with Republic Waste, and very big turnout, and he was very appreciative that they gave him so much attention. There is an item that we've been talking about, it's called SB 707, and I sat through that meeting, and that, as Sean and I have talked about, that's a little scary stuff coming up. Went to the Polo, I'm sorry.
What is SB 707?
New meeting rules for Brown Act. So it'll be, Truth will like it because she can call in and, kind of like she does with MTS, they'll be, they'll be able to talk in the meetings and things like that. The Old Fashioned Christmases last night, Polo Barn, my wife and I and Bill Palmering attended. Don't forget the Business After 5 Mixer tomorrow night, and Caltrans is having a 52 meeting that is also tomorrow night, and it's right down here. And then there's good old MTS. Now, everybody was talking about football teams tonight, and so I was going to bring up my old high school football team. They happened to be in the state playoffs. I don't remember Santana or anybody talking about that, but they'll be in the state CIF playoffs this weekend.
What high school?
Morris High School.
Okay.
I won't tell you the class.
That was the first year they opened, right?
Yeah, I know. I was actually my brother's sister.
Dustin?
You know, we've got another individual in our city. This is his last council meeting here tonight for us.
Who's that?
Mr. Rinsberry.
Oh, that's right.
So I want to thank Sam for his 19 years here at the city, too. I think it's about that, right? 18, 19, something like that? Yeah, 18. He's not coming back, you guys. This is it. He's done. He has eight days left and he's retired.
Councilmember, we're having a time in February to bring him back. Hopefully, he'll be here for us.
He said he ain't coming, so you gotta figure that out, Nick.
Oh, he's coming.
He's 2,360 miles away, so.
Yeah, you're going to have to fly him back.
All right, we just want to thank you, Sam, for yours of service here and, you know, everything you've done for the city, too. So hopefully we do get a chance to celebrate you in the future, but I know this is officially your last council meeting, so thank you.
By the way, we can use Zoom.
No, no, he's got to be here.
We'll have to talk to your new boss about that. Anything, councilmember?
No, sir.
No, okay. I do have a report. It's kind of a little bit more in detail than what I've given before about the League of California Cities. And the fact is, last week, we spent three and a half days in Rancho Mirage, of all places, in the desert. And what we set was the goals and priorities for 2026. And something that is a little bit different is that organization has, in the past, created goals and priorities and then just kind of left it up to staff. The board of directors left it up to staff to actually create a plan for how they're going to implement any of it, and many times, things fell very short on getting anything done. So now what we've done is we've created a strategy to implement the plans, the priorities. And also, a change is that we would do an annual priority list, and a lot of times, it didn't match up with the two-year session for the assembly. And so many bills that we would introduce would die after one year when we needed two years to get them through. So what we've decided is this will be the last time that we've done a one-year priority strategy session because there's only one year left in this current two-year session. So everything we do going forward will be actually on a two-year session strategy, and so that's going to make a big difference. So here's what we did for, and we only created four strategies this year, and I'm going to only read off a couple of them because I think they're important to what we're doing here. And one of them is, we discussed at our community policing committee meeting on Monday, and, but our first priority is to protect and enhance local revenues and expand economic development tools. And what does that really mean? That means that what we want to do is we want to take on the legislature and tell them that they need to stop giving us unfunded mandates, and if they do, they need to pay us. And why is this so important is because between 1980 and 2003, the state never paid for a mandate, a mandate, and it created a $2 billion deficit to counties, cities, and school districts. And so in 2003, the people went out and collected signatures and put on the ballot in 2004 what was known as Proposition 1A at the time, and it was to compel the state legislature to pay for those unfunded mandates. And so by the time that occurred, there were up to about $2.5 billion in unfunded mandates. And so if the law actually said, if the state cannot pay for those mandates, then we could toll any mandate that was sent down to us. We didn't have to do it. And that worked out really good until the first time we didn't do a state mandate, what they did, instead of paying us, they sent us fines. So from that day forward, we had to continue with unfunded mandates. And many people have heard about that term over and over again, about unfunded mandates. So today, we estimate that by 2026, those unfunded mandates will be about $2 billion, $2.6 billion. So that is having a great effect on, like I said, counties and cities and school districts. So what we need to do is, because we expect there to be a turnover in the legislature in the next term, and we want to start educating newer state legislators on what they can do to help us at the city, and what we're pushing is for more city council members and mayors to move up into the seats after having had to experience all of these unfunded mandates over the years at the lower level. And so we're hoping for a lot of success there. And then the second thing that we talked about was strengthening partnerships with the state to improve public safety. And there was a lot of discussion about that, and like, for instance, what does that even mean? And what we really circled the back around to and discussed mostly was Proposition 36 that was passed last year by the voters. And believe it or not, they only, they only funded about $100 to $120 million for every city and county in the state of California to get on board with that. And most of those cities don't have the money, counties, some counties don't even have the money because it requires the courts to be involved, probation department to be involved, and all these types of groups out there that provide a lot of, you know, help for people, the courts, because now if somebody is, has a mental illness or in a drug addiction, the courts can actually compel them into treatment and things of that nature, which costs money. And so the whole idea behind this is to also get the legislature to start putting money into the programs and actually comply with the state law, because that's a state law now that says we have to do those. And those are something that are so important to the people who are struggling every day. And some of those people are not struggling because of their own, for their own reasons, because there's questions now about which came first, you know, for instance, drug addiction or mental illness, or was it the forced homelessness that created drug addiction or mental illness? So all those things have to be worked out by the mental health, obviously, professionals, the drug professionals, and people that. And, but there is funding that's required, and there needs to be some checks and balance on all that funding because we can't go out to so many different organizations that really what you're doing is funding administrative costs and not help for people. So those are the two biggest things that we did, other than making sure that we have all the right things going for the homeless people, which is Prop 36 again, and then climate change and disaster. We don't want to see any more fires like we had up in Los Angeles. And I can tell you right now that San Diego County has one of the best fire prevention strategies anywhere that I've heard throughout the state, and I've heard a lot of counties and cities talk about what they do, and I'm like, I just want to slap my forehead because I'm like, how do you get away with it? Because, you know, chief, I'm sure you probably hear a lot of stories when you're, you know, throughout the state on a lot of different collaborations, and sometimes you just walk back and you go, man, how do they get, especially in super rural areas, it's like, how do they get away without more, without more disasters? So that's really my update. It was, it was a pretty good trip this time, and I say this time because there's not always as, you know, fruitful, so to speak. That's what I have. City manager?
Nothing.
City attorney?
No report, mayor.
Thank you. So that takes us to no closed session, so that means we're going to be adjourned.